All right, we're gonna open up the public here, I mean, meeting for the final budget. We have roll call.
Commissioner Grogan?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Ferschner?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
All right, this is an advertised public hearing to finalize the budget and adopt a final millage rate for the city of Ocoee. The city commission has previously approved a tentative millage rate of 6.5 mils, which represents a 14.42 increase in millage over the rollback rate of 5.6808 mils. The adopted tentative millage rate is the maximum millage rate, which may be adopted by the city commission at the final budget public hearing tonight. All right, Director Finance will make a brief presentation.
The proposed operating budgets for the city of Ocoee for fiscal year 2017 total The proposed general fund budget is $42,033,535. Ad valorem taxes are being assessed to provide funding for operational expenses, capital purchases, debt service payments, and salaries necessary to provide municipal services. The commission adopted a tentative millage rate for fiscal 2017 of 6.5 mils. This rate is higher than the rollback rate of 5.6808 and represents an increase in the millage over the rollback rate of 14.42 percent. The tentative millage rate generates about $1,616,020 more in revenues than the rollback rate. Of this amount, $1,363,605 is undesignated and has been placed in a contingency account. Adoption of the 6.5 mils requires a majority vote by the commission. Items that were discussed but no action taken during the tentative budget hearings are itemized on the unfunded list for further consideration.
Okay. All right, we're gonna have a call upon the general public if there's any comments and any questions. It's open for the general public.
I have a small question.
Give us your name and address.
My name is Chris Atkins. I live at 606 Ridgefield Avenue. That's in the Brentwood Heights subdivision here in Ocoee, Florida. I've owned my home there for about 15 years now. Happy resident of Ocoee, by the way. The question that I have, if you give me just a second to get my stuff open. I do know that everyone's time is very valuable, so I've just recently, in the last month or so, started to educate myself more with our community, especially with our budget. I do have a background in corporate auditing. I was an operations and sales manager for many years for a Fortune 500 company, and my family has owned small businesses for almost 40 years. So, it's something I kind of inherently understand. I can't claim to know everything that's contained within this budget, and nor am I gonna waste everyone's time trying to nitpick anything. So, there's just a couple things that I had questions about. Last week, I raised the question in regards to the ad valorem assessments that are assessed to our tax lien as a homeowner. This young lady here obviously stated that the ad valerums definitely cover more than our basic services. They help in other ways as well, which, you know, is a good thing. As a resident of Ocoee, one of the things that kind of stands out to me in the budget is our beginning cash. I know that, in my opinion, we'd like to operate somewhere closer to 10 percent as beginning cash as a denominator to start each year with. We did do that back in 2012, 2013 as actual, and over the last four years, we're down $1.2 million in beginning cash. You know, so that's something that I look at. When I also look at, during the same timeframe, our property tax increase was over $2 million, based upon, obviously, home revenues, you know, price of homes have gone up. So, the city has collected $2 million over the last four years as well in additional tax revenues. And, you know, so I see that we're gaining some there. I just like to, as a resident, like to see a little more. My great-grandparents used to tell me that a little until for a little bit later for something that's unexpected is better than worrying about it at that time. So, you know, that's each his own in that. I did notice some miscellaneous revenues last year, so we must have sold some property based upon the subfraction of what each individual line item is, and I think that's great, so that shows that we've gained some cash there as well, which is a good thing. We obviously see the explosion of growth in our community. So, that's for a different discussion. I kind of bought here to stay small, you know, to enjoy our hometown, not to be like somebody else, per se. But at the same time, I understand the importance of it. There's a couple things that I noticed, you know, being that I'm looking at it from a taxpayer's perspective, and I know we have some great, you know, parks and recreation and facilities in our community, and that's a draw for people who want to live here. But there's also some things that we do that I didn't necessarily see fragmented out to what I felt or I thought, maybe, and you guys maybe would be able to clarify, a clear understanding. Anytime we use taxpaying funds to promote our city or to have different things go on within the city, we should be paying close attention to the revenue that that particular venue or project draws at that point in time, in regards to its expenses as well. If it's taxpaying dollars and it's close, and it's, I like to use a 10 percent number, plus or minus, then I'm never gonna, you're never gonna hear a peep out of me. But, you know, just to isolate one particular item, in Chapter 3, page 104, line item, which would be 4004, is the Ocoee Founder's Day. It shows it under expenses at $3,500 bucks. I didn't see it anywhere else in the budget where it showed the expense for the particular event that took place, and I didn't see anywhere where it generated actual revenue or showed what revenue it brought in. Does that mean that I don't agree with the Ocoee Founder's Day? Absolutely not. That's not even a question. It's just that as a taxpaying constituent, I would like to see, if we're spending tax dollars on this and it costs X, then this is the revenue we bring in and it gives us X. I didn't see that clearly within this, so I guess that would be the only question that I have. I don't know if it's set by a dollar amount. You know, we have Spring Fling, and we have a lot of things that we do in the community that are apps, Martin Luther King Parade, that we do that are great, that are very high in expense, and I don't think we need to analyze each one of those. But once it gets above a certain dollar, which I would think that Founder's Day would be more than $3,500 bucks, just by the perception, I mean, police there would have to be more than that, I would think, that I would like to see what the actual cost is to what the revenue is that we bring in. And that's a big cash thing. Being an auditor in the past, there's one thing that's untraceable or very difficult to track and trace, and that's cash. So, we need to make sure that we are, as a community, if we're providing these taxpaying funds, that we're accounting for a tit-for-a-tat type deal. So, that's the only question or concern I have. Other than that, you know, like I said, I appreciate your guys'...
You got time to let Finance?
Absolutely.
In Chapter 3, on page 99, you'll see where the city contributes $95,000 to Founder's Day under the Recreation Department.
Okay.
And then the Parks Department also budgets to spend $3,500 for their portion of that.
So, $98,500 is actually budgeted, but split on two different?
Departments.
Departments.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, we, revenues has got to be in there somewhere. What we do is, we make, we, last year, I think, we ended up like $18,000 in the red, or less than that after we got through, but they need to give you a copy of that at the end of the year. What we do is, like, I totaled up the day I was working on today, we had 100, right out of 100,000 in donations. We're collecting sponsorships. That'll end up going towards it. Then we do the golf tournament, which is about 10,000. Then we do the food booths, which is about 7,000 or 8,000, 9,000. Then we do the rides. It's a total out money, it's a total that comes back to the city. So, we make money off all the different items there to help pay for back the money we use.
And I, I, I never thought that that wasn't, wouldn't be the case.
And one other point, and I don't know where you were talking about that, I need to ask Rob, but I will tell you that our city has about, is it nine or 10, $10 million in reserves? How much money?
We're starting this year, Wanda, 12, 12.1 to 12.1.
12.1.
12.1 million.
You're counting carryover funds as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we usually don't know that number until, like, the September, was it September of last year, and we got, no.
Right.
We got it in April this year, actually.
Right, after we finish the audit.
Which is a good number for most cities.
Yes, just so you know, the cash carryforward number that we use there, we usually spend probably 93 to 94 percent of the budget. So, what we do with finance, that number, we don't set it at a fixed 10 percent or anything. We actually look at what we think is left over from last year, and that's what we budget in that number. Otherwise, it would go into the reserves and raise the reserves higher. We think the reserve's a good number right now, so it's kind of a moving target, but we shoot for whatever we didn't use from the previous year to roll that over. We guessed at that number. We're usually fairly accurate with it, too.
And last year, we're rolling over, or positive or negative, what amount specifically?
The amount that's in the budget there.
2.7.
7, I think it was. 2.7?
Yes.
Yeah, and I understand the fund rollover that are allocated to each individual stormwater or trash, or, you know, whatever the case may be. I was speaking typically to the, just the general fund, where if you look back four years, goes at 3.9, and this year's at 2.7. So, I just saw a $1.2 million difference. I just, and this is just my opinion, it's not anybody nitpicking, that I myself would like to see closer to where we were four years ago in the general fund as a starting cash amount than where we are now.
Yeah.
Because we've gone backwards, although we've created more revenue.
Yeah, and that's why I said some moving targets here. The 3.9, there was a conscious decision because we were at 12 and we anticipated we were gonna go up to around 13.5. We tried to keep it, you know, 30 to 35 percent reserves. It was getting a little high, so that's why we boosted it to keep the taxes down. We added about another million in because we knew if we didn't, the reserves would be going up, so we wanted to keep the tax rate down a little further, which is why we took an additional million out and put it in the cash carryforward that year.
And I didn't see any foreseeable property sales this upcoming year in the proposed budget that we had last year, because I...
Yeah, last year we had, or this year, we had Crown Point.
This year.
We don't anticipate we have another property sale, the second phase of Crown Point property, but that won't be until next December, so that'll show up in next year's budget.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate your time. I filled out this piece of paper here.
Okay, yeah.
I'll make sure I get it up. Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anybody else from the public? Any more comments from the public? All right, so we'll call upon the city commission for comments and questions. Commissioner Grogan?
As with the budget, as with what we wanna, what we wanna continue on this, is that where we're going? No comments, Mayor?
General.
Okay, general. The only thing, the only thing that I want to see move forward to do is the priority-based budgeting, and other than that, I'm really good with everything else.
All right, anybody got any? All right, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, are you dropping the interest in the, not the priority, the other one that you were...
Quality performance.
Quality performance?
I think we put that in.
Are you dropping the quality performance? We, we've already included that because you all approved that at the last hearing.
What I want to know is at 15,000, what department did you want to focus on that? Because I just would question how many departments you could get a audit done by an outside program for 15 grand.
Well, they would come in and look at it. It would be a variety of things. It might specifically not be a department. What they would, what they could focus on would be, should we update all of our software? What's the benefits in updating, say, just for example, say, all of our software issues? It could be, maybe where they might find that we have a lot of needless spending, they could find, and it's a variety, they'll look at a whole bunch of things, and we're gonna get more specific when we actually see them and talk to them and find out exactly.
Is that going on RFP?
What?
That would go out on RFP?
Is that high enough to go on RFP, Rob?
No.
No.
Okay.
I don't, I personally don't, whether we spend any more money to try to find somebody to do it, I don't think that's necessary. It's gonna be the first one, the cities, that we're done. So, there'll be, there'll be a lot of questions, there's gonna be a lot of answers, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of unknowns. I mean, on the first, and that's what we're gonna have to tell them, too. So, they might, they might come to us and say, hey, listen, this is where, this is where we think we should look, you know, in general of the whole city, not necessarily breaking it down to the different departments. But they might see something that says, hey, we might want to look further into this. How long it's worked, because once they get going, they can rabbit hole down to something that they're chasing that they see as an issue.
Okay. No, I just thought that rate. Okay, I don't think I have any questions right now.
Right, Commissioner Ferschner?
All the above items on this list, Wanda, they're the tentatively approved items?
They're currently in the budget.
Okay, brings it up to 5.8 roughly, less the contingency funds?
Yep.
The only other thing that I would like to see us consider tonight is the fire station improvements for $40,000 or .0203 mils. I believe that will allow us, after that's done, is to physically locate an engine on the north end up there. I know that we don't have the manpower to staff that yet, and the rest of the construction projects have been moved down to be considered in the bond issue, which I think is a great start, but this is not a significant increase to the current budget. It'll still keep it under 6.0 mils, and it'll at least allow us to start on the construction of that station up there, so it will house an engine. So, if manpower allows, the chief may be able to move people around and field an engine up there prior to getting more personnel in.
So, are you saying, excuse me, are you, are you saying you're okay to put an extra five and a half million dollars on our bond?
No, he said 40,000.
No, no.
I know, I know that, but he's talking about constructing the firehouse, which is, oh, well, the 1.4 million? I thought, well, that's all under discussion for tonight, right? I would personally, we keep chipping away at the bond that we designate for the downtown. I don't think that's good planning. That's not what we intended on, it's not what we worked so hard in the past couple of years to do.
No, that's, that's not what I'm asking for, Commissioner. I'm asking to consider that $40,000 for the station improvement to be placed in this next year's budget.
Then I think we were, just in point of interest, I think we were talking about maybe the, maybe when we collect the money next year, we'll have that money in the next year budget coming from that land sale.
Correct.
It won't be the bond money.
Correct, okay.
You cannot use it for the salaries, but we can use it for the building.
Right, right. I agree, I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure that we're all talking the same thing now before we finalize.
That's all I have. Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, just a couple things, Mayor. First of all, once we get into the motions, I will take that money out of contingency that I put in the other night, so we can get it back down. The other thing that I would like to mention, and last night at the, at the commission meeting, there was a discussion on the money we use for one of the community grants, and we seem to have, we go back and forth with that every year, because a number of the people that go in to ask for money on that aren't from the city of Ocoee. What I would like to consider, or like to ask the board to consider, is dropping that grant and taking that money and put it into the other grant that we use for the HOAs and the Ocoee residents. And that way, maybe getting rid of the issue and still having the money out there so that we can help our community, but this way, it'd be more community-driven. It just seems we have a discussion on it every year during the year, and it seems to be forgotten, this time because it was so close with the budget with the commission meeting just last night, sort of fresh in the memory, and just think that that might be a way to solve that and still get money out to the citizens, but at the same time, stop sending it out of the community. So, I'm open to suggestions of what people think about that recommendation.
Okay, Tony, get that first.
That's it.
Well, one of the things, if we did that, I'd rather take and make a, maybe put it in that one part into it. We're in the process of trying to do economic development and bring in businesses. In the CRA realm out on Highway 50 in that area, we can use the CRA fund for some of that initiative money. I'd like to see us put a money in the business thing for small businesses that want to open up downtown or in areas around downtown that we don't have that grant money, to put it in there where if they're a new business in town or a business in town that needs it, we could do a little grant to that as a business deal to help them kick it off to get it going in the downtown area. The other thing is, John, I like the priority budget, but I'd rather put the 40,000 from the fire department in there, because I do not want to raise that millage rate above 5.9 something. I want to keep it below that. So, I would, I would wait until maybe next year. We got the quality performance on it in there, but I would wait on the 47,000 and do the 40 for the fire. I'd like, like I said, I would, whether it's raising 14.42 and above our prior budget in our, in our tax base, I would rather take and try to keep our ad valorem at 5.9 or below 5.9, and I would particularly like to make it in the 5.8 range if possible. So, we've had to work towards, and one of the things we do with economic development is get to the point where we can start moving our tax base back for people. I looked at, I don't know if any of you looked in the paper, and we're not comparing it to other towns or anything else, but in Winter Gardens, it's spread all over the Times, in the Times this week, their millage rate is 4.42. I know it's a lot different stuff what goes on in every town, but somehow or another, we've got to be able to take and start working back towards that process and getting the millage down. But that, that's the one thing I would like, I would have no problem doing the 40,000, but I'd wait on the 47, and, and, and the, give it away, the, what do you call it, for the, somebody help me here, I forgot the word. I'm like the mayor, I've lost my track. The grants, giving them a grant money. So, I'd rather not do that. I'd rather take and do the, take, keep the one grant for the homeowners associations and try to rotate that where it doesn't just happen to the same people every year. You have to, if you get a grant one year, you gotta wait at least a couple years for you to get that grant again, where you don't turn around and keep getting a grant from certain homeowners. That way, all of them get a chance to do it. So, that's my comments. And, all right, is there any amendments to the adopted tentative budget?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to make a motion to remove from contingency $1,363,605.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keller to remove the money from the contingency fund and seconded by Commissioner Grogan. Any comments? No comments, let's vote. All right, and before, before I enter to go one more spot, I wanted to make a comment to Mr. Atkins. Mr. Atkins, I will say that, I don't know if anybody thought about it a while ago, but when we did the new Lakeshore Center, we took the money out of reserves to build that Lakeshore Center for the citizens, which was, how much, Al, do you know how much exactly we took out?
2.6?
2.1.
2.1.
2.1 million out of there to do that, to spend the money out of there instead of putting it into tax part. So, we just took it out of that reserve budget to pay for that building, which is booked like 18 months in advance now, so it was something to give to the citizens and use it for the city. All right, entertain motions to amend tentative budget, move to amend the tentative budget as follows, indicating, all right, the city commission should not vote on adoption of the millage rate or final budget until all amendments are complete. When there are no further amendments to the adopted tentative budget, proceed to adoption of final millage rate. Is there any more, any more adoption of any amendments?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the tentative budget as follows, to add the fire station improvements at the cost of $40,000 or .0203 mils to the current budget.
All right, motions made.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Commissioner Keller. Will you give me a readout of what that would take the millage to?
That would put the millage at 5.8291.
5.?
8291.
All right. All right, motions made by Commissioner Ferschner, seconded by Commissioner Keller to put in the 40,000 for the firehouse. Do I hear any more discussion? No more discussion, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Let me get a little entertainment this year.
I'd like to make the motion to add $50,000 to contingency.
Do we have?
Just a clarification from Wanda or Pam or Bob. We do have 50,000 in contingency at this point.
We already have 50,000 in there, okay. I didn't see that in the budget book.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then, that bothers a second.
All right, now we need to adopt. You okay?
It died from lack of a second, which is...
We already got 50 in there. We got 50 in there.
I know, I know that. That's why I'm saying my motion died from a lack of a second.
Yeah, it died from a lack of a second. Adoption of final millage rate ordinance.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'd like to entertain a motion to set the final millage rate, move to adopt the ordinance number 2016-010, setting the final millage rate at 5.8291 mil for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion made by Commissioner Keller. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson for putting the millage rate at 5.8291. Any comments? No comments, let's vote. Passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, all right, we're gonna call upon the Director of Finance to publicly announce the recomputed proposal fund final millage rate and the percent of which we recomputed proposed final millage rate exceeds the rollback rate. It should be announced that this is a proposed millage increase in property taxes.
The final millage rate is set at 5.8291, which is a 2.61 percent increase over the rollback rate of 5.6808.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna call upon the city attorney to read the title of ordinance number 2016-010 regarding the final millage rate.
All right, this is an ordinance of the city of Ocoee, Florida, establishing a final millage rate of 5.8291 mils for ad valorem taxes for the city of Ocoee for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, providing for millage adjustment, providing for collection of taxes, providing for a 2.61 percent in millage rate over the rollback rate, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right, now we're gonna call for public... All right, now we're going to call for public comment and questions prior to vote on the ordinance to adopt the final millage rate. So, anybody in the ordinance, citizens, public, has any comments on the ordinance to adopt the budget? Anybody? Now's the time to make comments. Do you want to read the ...
Before I make my ...
Wait a minute.
Just a second, we kind of got ahead of ourselves again. So, let's go ahead and get a motion for approval of the ordinance.
That's next.
Do you need me to redo that one?
Number nine is where we're at.
Right.
We'll get to the budget, folks. All right, number nine, entertain a motion to set the final millage rate, move to adopt ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash zero one zero, set the final millage rate of five point eight two nine one for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Okay, yeah, I think I got out of, ahead of myself there before. So, I'll make the motion to move to adopt the ordinance number two zero one six dash zero one zero, setting the final millage rate of five point eight two nine one mils for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keller, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, to adopt ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash zero one zero, setting the final millage rate of five point eight two nine one. No more comments, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. We'll call the City Attorney again. They got double things, are you going to read it again?
No, this is a different ordinance.
All right, two thousand sixteen dash oh one one, thank you.
All right, this is an ordinance of the city of Ocoee, Orange County, Florida, adopting a final budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand sixteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right, same thing, we're going to call for public comment and questions prior to vote on the ordinance to adopt final budget. Anybody in the ordinance, in the public, want to make comments? No comments, all right? We're going to go to number twelve here, entertain a motion to adopt the final budget, move to adopt ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash zero one one, approving a final budget for the fiscal year beginning October the first, two thousand sixteen, and ending September the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to move to adopt ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash zero one one, approving a final budget for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand sixteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion's made by Commissioner Keller, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. No more comments, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the budget, two thousand sixteen seventeen. Any Commissioners got any more comments? Anybody? Meeting's earned.